No más que eso, yo te tengo amor, te quiero dar todo lo que quieras. Se llama corazón, se llama amor. Eres mi corazón, eres mi corazón, yo te quiero dar amor, entiéndelo. Quiero dar mi perro, que soy mi amor. Es el alma que me dice, que me dice que te despierte. If we can begin, um, as soon as the TV comes on, we can begin with a presentation of the colors.
La esquinita de mi hueso, que han caído los esquemas de mi vida.
All right, we're now live, so I'm gonna ask you all please to stand and we're gonna have And then I believe we're gonna have our invocation by Police Chaplain Heather Riley.
Good evening, thank you so much. Lord God, you are a redeeming God, as we gather to remember your saving purposes, give us minds, hearts, and wills to hear your word to us, and then to live it. Holy God, one in grace, one glory, one in love, you call us to love and serve you as one people, united in heart, mind, spirit, and strength. Help us to love one another, living in unity and peace, working together in your spirit for the good of all. And for each council member this evening, would you grant wisdom and discernment? And for the new members being installed this evening, David Penalosa, Roman Reyna, Cecilia Iglesias, and our re-elected mayor, Miguel Pulido, would you give an extra portion of grace and strength to serve with all integrity in the position you have appointed them? In your holy name we pray, amen.
Amen. Now we're gonna have the Pledge of Allegiance by Kendall Benalosa and Rosie Bylon.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Now we're gonna have our national anthem sung by Azli Diaz from the Orange County School
Oh, say, can you see, by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed, and the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave, o'er the land and the free, and the home of the brave?
Okay, we have no public comments, so I'm going to go to the adoption of election reports.
Motion to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Sir. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Now we're going to go to closing remarks, and we're gonna begin with Mayor Pro Tem, Michelle Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And first and foremost, I would like to just thank my colleagues on this dais, for the majority of you, I've served with, for 12 years on this council, and for those a very short period of time, Councilman Solorio and Councilman Villegas, I wanna wish you the best, as you bring on new colleagues, and that you mentor, and that you help guide this new council. And I know that, Mr. Villegas, that you will lead, and I have to say that, that we've served for these past two years, I have to tell you that I am proud that you're on this dais, and as a mayor pro tem, and as I served in this position for the last two years, it is my hope that you will replace me as mayor pro tem, Juan. You do an exceptional job. And to conclude, I just wanted to take a moment to thank my twin brother who is here, and my sister-in-law Lori, and my beautiful nephew, and I think my niece is here, Brooke, if she's not, I don't see her, but I would like to thank them, Mike, if you could please stand, please, and Lori, and my beautiful nephew, Petey. You know, it's a bittersweet moment for me, I don't have much family, this city has always been my family, but as I look into the audience, when I got elected in 2006, there were some very special people in this room that are not here today, and one was my mother, who passed away in 2010 at the age of 47, and she sat third row, fourth seat, as I was taking the oath of office, and my father figure, where Janel McLaughlin is at, that's where my father figure, Mark Press, sat, and so my entire 12 years on this dais, that every time I came up here, I gave praise, and I thank God for giving me the memories and the opportunity from being on this dais to see their beautiful faces, and so as I leave here, that's the reflection that I have, is on those two special people that really made a significant impact in my life. And I'll just conclude with the following one, to thank the residents of this beautiful city, the business community, the amazing staff of this city have done tremendous, we've done a lot of great work in 12 years, and it really takes teamwork to make the dream work, and it's been our staff that has led the way, and I wanna thank Mr. Our city manager, Raoul Gómez, our city attorney, Sonia Carvalho, Maria Huizar, our clerk, it's been a tremendous honor and pleasure to work with you, fine ladies and gentlemen, and to your staff, your commitment and your loyalty earlier, I said that, thank you for loving this city, and I said it earlier that I wanna thank God, and you know, this city is a godly city, God has its hands on this city, and this city is very special, and I think many of us that love this city, we know that, and I leave with an open heart, a sacred heart, that there are times up here where you have challenging times, you know, financially sometimes the city was not doing well, and you get frustrated, and sometimes you lose yourself, and you become many things to many people. And I went to Harvard in July, and it was a very transformational moment for me, and I've had a lot of accolades in my 12 years on this dais, but it was that opportunity to attend Harvard that really changed my life, and in particular, one professor, one professor by the name of Marty Linsky, and he said three things to me that I will never forget, and had probably the biggest impact in my life thus far, and the first was, what are you willing to die for? The second question, can you be in the present moment? And finally, you know, and I've talked about this, when we talk about leadership, and what does leadership really mean? Leadership means love, and can you lead this city with love, with an open heart? And there were times where that heart closed, and today, I could tell you with a smile, that it is open, and that I leave doing some amazing things, and that was dealing with our homeless population, and opening the homeless shelter, the Link, and being out there at four o'clock in the morning, and helping folks, and/or, you know, our first, you know, dedicated protected bike link on Bristol, and today I had my final meeting at 2:00 PM, I went to the very end, at 2:00 PM I had a meeting with our police department, and ESRI, and our IT folks, to talk about how do we modernize and being able to provide the homeless accounts in a way that is innovative and efficient for our staff, and so, you know, to conclude, you know, thank you, it's some of the greatest moments of my life have been serving this beautiful city, and so I leave with a smile, and Mr. Mayor, I came in, sitting next to you, and I leave, sitting next to you, and thank you for your dedicated service, and thank you to this council for your dedicated service, and to the residents who have committed, many of them who are commissioners, and who love this city and committed their lives to making sure that this city becomes a better place together. Thank you all, it's been an honor and a privilege to serve all of you, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, for your kind words, now I wanted to go to Ward Four, which is represented by P. David Benavides.
Thank you, Mayor Pulido, I know that we're here to celebrate, and see newly-elected council members sworn in, and I thank you for your indulgence and patience here, as few of us who've, you know, had the opportunity to serve this community for 12 years are here serving in our last day in this capacity. Few people I wanna extend a thank you to, one is, first of all, my family, my wife, Erica, my daughter Naice, my sons, Aiden, Gabriel, and Joseph, when you serve in the capacity as a councilman, there's a lot of, a lot of activities, a lot of things going on, a lot of events out in the community as active as Santana is, so I thank my kids and my wife for indulging, sometimes date night was going out to an event for a dinner, for a nonprofit organization, or an outing for us was going out to ribbon cutting, or going out to the zoo for, again, an opening of some new activity there, and that was oftentimes our outings as a family is going out to experience just all the great things that are taking place here in the city of Santana. I also wanna thank my colleagues, Councilman Sarmiento, Councilmember Tina Jero, Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor Pulido, Councilman Villegas, Councilman Solorio, it's been truly an honor and a privilege to serve alongside you, to serve our city, and accomplish much together. To the city staff, residents of the city, you have great people who are serving you in various capacities throughout the organization, people truly love this city, this community, many of whom were born and raised here in the city of Santana, and pour out a lot of their hard work, blood, sweat, and tears to serve the city and this community with honor. So I wanna thank all of you, staff members, for the privilege to be able to work alongside you, roll up our sleeves and get things done from behalf of our residents, from my assistant currently at City Manager's Office, Yosenia Cruz, previously Yasmin Vasquez, a few folks in the City Manager's Office, Julie Castro-Cárdenas, Jorge Arcías, Robert Cortez, all Santana homegrown kids, so it's just been awesome to be able to see, and as you see these little ones who are, who did a fabulous job, ladies, by the way, young girls doing, presenting the Pledge of Allegiance, our own homegrown Santana youth that are, have tremendous talent, and tremendous abilities, and like Mayor Pro Tem, I believe in God's hands upon this city, upon our young people, and they will, our city will thrive and do well, as we continue to come alongside and support our young people, and again, those few, Robert, Jorge, Julie, and City Manager's Office alone, are just a few of those who have grown up throughout the city and are doing amazing things. City manager, Raúl Gómez, you've been, have served this city, previously as Public Works Director, currently as our city manager, with much integrity, ethics, and have served us well, and I look forward to your continued leadership. We as council members get to appoint three executive leaders within the organization, city manager, city attorney, Sonia Carvalho, it's just been a truly, just a great privilege to be able to work alongside you, to have you serve our city well, again, with integrity and with heart, it's been great to be able to see a city, an attorney who's able to both juggle doing things well above board, and just having a true heart for this community. Maria Huizar, as our city clerk, has done so much, to be able to open the doors of City Hall to the residents of our city, of our community, and I thank you, Maria, for serving our community well. The residents, I wanna thank you for your trust, several times over, in '06, 2010, and then '14, it truly has been an honor and a privilege, our neighborhood residents, neighborhood associations is where I got started, Beavista Neighborhood, Casa Bonita Neighborhood, with Roman Reyna, Comlink, Sacred, Santana Building Health Communities, many nonprofit organizations out there, the business community, Downtown New York, Santana Business Council, many others, it truly has been an honor and a privilege, and I wanna thank you all, perhaps some point in the future you'll grant me that privilege and that honor once again, I love this city, and it is an amazing place. Three things that I wanna wrap with is a PSA. PSA is one of those things where, you know, you have to listen to, whether you're listening to the radio, whether you're watching TV, and then something comes up, and so I ask for a few more, one more minute here, and it stands for this, priorities, so to the incoming council and the council that will continue to lead and serve our city, I just wanna encourage you, some of these things we've done, perhaps, some of those, these things I would have hoped that we've been able to do, or I would have been able to help and do, maybe better, more effectively, I just wanna encourage you all to identify what are your core priorities as a council, so that you can give that direction to our staff, and that they'll be able to serve and help you execute those priorities, because we can't do it all, so if you're able to narrow down, you know, three, four things that you really, you're able to come together and identify, and support, again, we have a great city manager and staff, so I just encourage the councils, you come together to support each other, and support these capable professionals, and for the executive management team, from the police chief, to Public Works Director, to Planning and Building Director, the whole EMT, you have a great leader here in the city manager, and I encourage you to support him and his leadership, and to support our youth and our residents, and support each other. In reality, not one of us can do, can accomplish much on our own, but together you all will be able to do much, and the last letter, A, accountability, as you set your priorities, and you'll be able to have a plan, to be able to have an accountability system for your executive management team, your city manager executive management team, for each other, and you'll be able to demonstrate to the residents that you're fulfilling the needs of this community. I believe in this council that's coming in, the voters believe in you, your successes are collective success as a city, so wish you well, and thank you once again.
Councilor Tina Jero, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First and foremost, I wanna thank the residents of Santana, you voted me in when I was only 29 years old, to the school board, it's been 18 years that I have served as an elected official representing the residents of Santana. I've been married for 22 years, so only a very short time was I not in a position where I was representing people in this community. I wanna thank my wife, 'cause she's had to put up with that all this time, and my kids, my mother who's here tonight as well, they've had to share me with all of you, and it's been a family affair, where we, where you come back home, and you have a rough day, and you talk to them, and then they build you up, or sometimes, if you're my wife, she'll tear you down. And, I'm just teasing you babies, anyhow, but, and, but, but, I stand here before you today, extremely proud, because this council was the first all-Latino council of a major city in the United States, and we wore that badge with honor, and we wanted to make sure that while others were saying, oh, it's gonna become corrupt, and you're gonna do this, you're gonna do that, that we went, no, we're gonna do some great things. So I stand before you, as an elected official of 18 years, proud to say, that I've never been investigated, I've never broken the law, and I've always kept you first before my, even my own political career. I could have sold out many times, but I chose to do it the right way, and I leave today with my head held high, but I thank you for that, because you were always there for me as well. I have to tell you a story, I was 29 years old, I was on the school board, so I want Councilman Peñalosa to share this with me, 'cause we were both about the same age, I used to be the best-looking council member, now he's coming in, he's gonna take that crown. But, but... But, but this is what I want to share with you. You come in wanting to do great things. And I remember one day, there's a mobile home park by my house and Jim Thorpe Fundamental had just been built. And a lady comes to me and she says, Sal, you're on the school board, tell me how this is fair. I live right here, that school is one block away from me, but I can't go to that school because I can't camp. I have two jobs, I take the bus to work and I have to take my daughter all the way to Jefferson because I don't have the money to camp? And I said, yeah, that's not fair. We got to change that. So I go back to the school board members and they look at me like, do you really want to take on the fundamental parents? And I went, oh shoot, I didn't think about that. He says, Sal, they will fry you. They are tenacious, do not mess with that. And so I got altruistic on him, I'm like, what are we here for? So they took my lead. Oh my God. Jam-packed house, people were talking about recalling me, how dare you? So I cut a deal with them. I said, here's what we'll do. We'll take it to the state attorney general. And if he says that we are violating the law by having people camp instead of a random unbiased process, will you be okay with that? They were so sure that they were correct that they said, yes, cool, let's do it. We send it up to the state attorney general's office. State attorney general says, according to the California ed code and law, first come, first served is not, is violating the law. It is not random and unbiased. You have to change the way you enter your fundamental schools. Everybody said, okay, that was the deal we cut, we move forward. That's why people don't camp anymore. Well, two weeks later, we find out that one of our board members was expecting and about to be engaged to the state attorney general. Oh my gosh, you can't make this up. Santa Ana politics at its best. So even when you're trying to do the right thing, craziness happens sometimes. But I bring this, I bring this to you tonight because my colleagues did not share this and I think it's important to share. There was a Board of Trustees by the name of Zeke Hernandez, who's on the Board of Trustees right now, he wasn't an elected official back then. I asked him about a council member who was here prior to us getting here. And his response to me was, yeah, he's okay, but he's a do-nothing council member, he hasn't done anything. And that resonated with me and it resonated with us that we weren't, we weren't going to be do-nothing council members. So here's what we've done. When we first got elected, if all you spoke was Spanish, good luck, you didn't get to hear what was going on in the meeting. This council here, the four of us, Councilmember Sarmiento, Martinez, Benavides, pushed to have translation equipment. And at first it was like, well, nobody's going to use it. Come to a council meeting now. We have jam-packed seats with people using that translation equipment. Let me tell you what's happened. Instead of them just being silent and quiet, they come up here and they speak now and they're part of the discussion. We brought that in. During our time here in our first four years, if you were undocumented or didn't have a driver's license and you got pulled over, your car was towed. And people, our hardworking people who were driving to work couldn't get their car out because every day you were mounting $300 more in fines. Pretty soon, the car that you were driving that was a little jalopy of $500 is now costing you $1,500 to take it out. And then the tow truck companies would sell it and keep the property, the profits. It was highway robbery against our most vulnerable community in this city. We changed that. Now, they get pulled, if some, well, back then because they couldn't get driver's license, now they can, they get pulled over, they call someone who has, who could come pick it up, who has a valid driver's license and insurance to pick up the car and they wouldn't get towed. These are little things that have a huge effect on folks in our community. And we wonder if education is going to thrive. It thrives because parents are there. And when we, when we disable them that way and take away something that they worked so hard for, only to make a living, it affects our community. We changed that. We were going through bankruptcy. All of us looked at each other and said, would you rather be anywhere else? They said, no, we're going to get through this. It was this council that pushed us through this. We made very difficult decisions, we changed our city manager, we brought in a city manager who had been a city manager before and we were able to keep the city afloat. There's a population out there that people don't know about, that sometimes is quiet, and that's our LGBTQ community. They have the highest suicide rate amongst teenagers. This council here said, we are going to let people know that they are welcome. And we flew the rainbow flag because God loves everybody, not just certain individuals. We wanted to show them that they have a family and that they have a place here in this city. We realized that council members only had two terms and the mayor's position was unlimited. So we were waited out. We got together, we went to the voters, we said, can you give us one more term so we can get the job done? The voters unanimously said yes. So then we said, hey, don't you think that the mayor's position should also be termed? And the residents said yes. So we had term limits. We had, we, we were able to do certain things that other people didn't think we could do. The cannabis regulation. There were, there were dispensaries, illegal dispensaries that were opening up by our schools, by our neighborhoods. You saw them because you would call us and tell us, hey, we got issues, we got people loitering over here. So what did we do? We took a responsible approach. We are the leaders now on how to do this correctly and we got all those illegal dispensaries out of our residents, out of our school areas and put them in industrial zones and regulate them and it's been a huge success to the city. But those things weren't easy. Those things weren't easy. But it was this council. It wasn't one person, it was this council. And as we move forward, I tell you what, I'm incredibly honored to have been here to work with all of you and to other members that were here before you as well. Because together, we set a path here in Santa Ana towards success. We have word elections today. We brought it to you, you voted it in. Our game plan has always been, we have an idea, but let's give it to the residents and let them decide. So in essence, it's our victory. My brother said this to me, he said, my brother and I come from the same father, same mother, completely different frame of thinkings. He's a businessman, Republican. I'm a teacher, Democrat. But we love each other. And he said to me, he said, while you were out there serving, serving the community, he says, I tip my hat, I respect you for that. He says, I just wanted to make money and make money I have. And he says, so what do you, what do you think in all of this now that you're exiting? And I said, you know what Gus? I admire everything you've done because we both came from very little. From two kids who grew up living in a garage to a one bedroom and then eventually renting the house and eventually having a little house to having our father murdered. When, one week before my 15th birthday, I said, I respect you because we've accomplished a lot. But I'm going to tell you this, my life has been dedicated to investing in people. People like you, people like you, people like you. And I am 100% confident in Santa Ana that this next council that's coming in is going to invest in you too. Thank you very much.
I think now I will give you the gavel and do the...
We actually have presentations for...
So, okay, so let's do that. You're going to go ahead and conduct those presentations? So I'll go down there and we'll present them to the different members. Got it? This is a condemnation for distinguished service and in your case, it, you know, talks about your work on Aleo, your work on SCAG, all the different meetings that you went to. I don't know how many they were in total, but it was probably in the thousands if I'm not mistaken. It also talks about your 12 years here on the city council. It talks about how since you were originally raised here in the city from age 11 forward. So that's a long, long time. And how you successfully strive to improve yourself through education and examples that you've led here to the community. I also personally want to add that I think you've had a lot of strong spiritual growth. Everything from your evolution of, you know, things such as your health, exercise, your diet, how you take care of yourself, you've changed in so many ways. And I know you, you're leaving a better person, but I also think you're leaving a better city. So for the years that I had the privilege of serving with you, I want to present you this, which is the distinguished service award. And I also, I also want to present you a tile that says to Michelle C. Martinez, Mayor Protem, 2016 through 18, Councilmembers 26 through 18. So let me give you that.
Thank you.
And also I get to give you this. I have no idea what's in here, but, but I'm sure it's nice.
He's going to peek.
I'm going to peek, but, but I'm not going to peek. I mean, you can't see, they got too much paper in there.
No, I told her for a long time.
But it's, but it's different from the other two.
Yes.
So whatever these guys are getting is a little bit different. So thank you, thank you, Michelle. David?
What's P stand for?
I just asked him what the P stands for because he always goes by David Benavides. And this says P. David Benavides and it's Pablo, it's Pablo. But everywhere else it only says David. But the beginning and the end says P. It, it talks here about many of your accomplishments and it's David. You know, really a lot of giving because you're a giver. You're out there and you're always helping, whether it's a nonprofit or folks out in the community, whatever you can do, you've, you've given a lot. Let me just state some examples. You served on the ETEC committee, you served on the Public Safety Committee, Neighborhood Improvement, Code Enforcement, Youth Education, Community Services Committee, Economic Development Committee, Infrastructure, Budget. You also were active serving on the Santa Ana Orange County Water District, Sanitation District Board. Also, you are on the Orange County Council of Governments Board of Directors. And also you're a member of the Biola University Alumni Association. You're a member of the Rancho Santiago Community College District, Community Advisory Committee, and also a board member for the Comunidad Latina Federal Credit Union here in Santa Ana. It also talks about, you know, the devotion that you've given over the years, you know, really to your service here at the city. I know, you know, constituent follow-up, you know, talking to folks. For a while there, you had office hours in a neighborhood somewhere in a shopping center. And then we had to get staff to drive people there because the council was there and people had to be aware, but, you know, but it was your idea, you did it, you committed the time and the effort. So let me tell you that it was a privilege working with you. I know sometimes we had differences, but when we began, I was out there knocking on doors, walking precincts for you. It seems like a long time ago and it was in a way, but, but you've got the same smile and the same spirit and you're basically the same person, David, and, and I want to thank you for your service. You know, this is different than Michelle's bag, but it also says David instead of Sal. I'll give Sal's in a minute. I don't know if the inside's the same. If they're not, we're going to have to compare and take notes. I, I do know that it's going to be different from Michelle's, but, but maybe it's just that paper on top. But regardless of that, thank you, David. Take care. Sal, it's my privilege to be here with you after a long, long time. You know, years that you were on the school board, I was on the council, we're working on things. We've seen campaigns, we've, we've seen tremendous efforts, you know, we've agreed, we've disagreed, but we've always been gentlemen and we've always worked on behalf of the city and nobody can question the love or the integrity or the desire that, that exists to make this a better city. And as I stand here many years after I've met you, it's my privilege and honor to say, you know, some very positive things that you've accomplished. And the first one I want to start with is what you do for kids. You know, you walk in there, you connect with them, they call you Mr. T., you know, you joke with them, you, you're able to deal with them on, on their level and you inspire them. And I think that's the best thing a teacher can do and a human being can do for another human being is to try to elevate them. And, and, and what you've done with the debate teams and how you've gone on to national competitions and you've taken kids that are now off in colleges and, you know, I know sometimes the parents are sad because they're, you know, they got a scholarship far, far away and they'll blame you for that. But, but ultimately you're making them better kids through the education that they've been able to accomplish. And I also want to commend you because you often are looking out for those that don't have other abilities, other resources. I know you told a story recently, we had some kid that, you know, didn't have the right shoes or the right outfit and you got him the outfit so that the kid could travel and, and you'd be able to present himself.
And he took first place.
And he took first place, you know? Sal got him there. This kid probably wouldn't even have gone without you for many, many reasons, including not having the proper attire. So he took first place. Also, look, I'm just going to read a few things, but there's a bunch more. You've been involved in things such as the universal representation through the Vera Institute, advocating, you know, the mobile food truck ordinance. You've been active with Roosevelt Walker Community Center, the Summer Nightlights Program, Restaurant Week, Ambassadors of Compassion Leadership Program, branding and tourism funding for the Chamber of Commerce, the city's CBDG Small Business Incentive Program, the Orange County Recycling Market Development Zone, master plan for the Santa Ana Zoo and the warmer industrial pavement, Warner Industrial and Pavement Improvement Project. And look, there's, there's a whole much, bunch more, Sal. But I think, to me, the thing that always shines has been your heart, your desire to help. It's, it's deep, it's genuine, it's heartfelt. And for your service to the city and the privilege of working with you for 12 years, Sal, I, I, I thank you and I look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you. This is a tile like the one I've given the other two. This says Mayor Protem, 2012 through 14, City Councilmember 2006 to 2018. And Michelle's already walking off the stage here, but, but that's okay. And look, I'll give you this, but this thing came off, but it was just by accident, but it's the same bag as the others are getting. But thank you for your service, Sal.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Take care.
If I can please have David Pulido come to the front to swear...
And Madam Clerk, before you do that, let me officially give you the gavels and symbolizes running the meeting. So you're going to run the meeting until we have a new council sworn in and... council sworn in, and we'll go from there. So David, here he comes. My son, David Andrew Polito, I'm just gonna embarrass him for a moment. I'm very, very proud of him, a tremendous student at OSHA, now a freshman at UC Irvine. He gives me hope for the future and, you know, the next generations and things to come. My elder son, Miguelito, has been here and done things with me here in the past, and my daughter Isabel, she's 17 years old, going on 34. And so she's not here, and my wife Laura I know is with her, watching from home. So David, you're representing the whole family, your uncles, your cousins, your grandparents, your siblings, the weight of the world. And let me take it from there. See, and correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, I'm here to help.
I, Miguel Polito, do solemnly swear that I will protect and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
All right, we need to redo. I will support and defend. And this is official, this is official.
All right, one more time, and if not, then you'll take it. I, Miguel Polito, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
If I can have Councilmember-elect David Penalosa come to the front, please?
Okay. I was gonna ask, were we supposed to bring a Bible? I wasn't sure. Okay. Got it. You guys wanna hold it?
Yeah.
Wait. That's how it works, right? Okay. I, David Penalosa, do solemnly swear to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties which I'm about to enter. Thank you.
If I can have Pete Adame and Councilmember-elect Roman Reyna come to the front, please. Mr. Pete Adame will be performing the oath of office for Roman Reyna.
I, Roman Reyna, do solemnly swear that I support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and I'll bear true faith and alliance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. And I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservations or purpose, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you.
We know you work very hard, so you're gonna be called up in a moment.
If I can have Councilmember-elect Cecilia Iglesias and the Honorable Supervisor Andrew Doe come to the front, please. The supervisor will be performing the oath of office for the councilmember.
And repeat after me. I, Cecilia Iglesias...
I, Cecilia Iglesias...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support...
That I will support...
And defend...
And defend...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies...
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic...
That I will bear...
That I will bear...
True faith and allegiance...
True faith and allegiance...
To the Constitution...
To the Constitution...
Of the United States...
Of the United States...
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution...
Of the State of California...
Of the State of California...
That I take this obligation...
That I take this obligation...
Freely...
Freely...
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation...
Or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion...
That I will well...
That I will well...
And faithfully...
And faithfully...
Discharge...
Discharge...
The duties...
The duties...
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Which I...
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
So I call this meeting back to order, but in certain ways, it's a new meeting, because it's a new city council, and we had convened the previous one, now we're opening up this meeting. So I want to, first of all, talk about and deal with a nomination for the Mayor Pro Tem. Do I have any nominations?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate myself.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have any other nominations? I will call for the vote. He nominated Juan Villas, nominated Juan Villas. And he's not withdrawing his nomination, so... So with that, what I would do is just call for a vote. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. Motion carries. So congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem. I now would like to entertain council comments, and this is almost over, then we're all going to Bowers for a party. So just hang in there a little bit longer, we're almost done. Do I dare say that everybody speak? Let's start with Councilman Vincenzo Armento. Please go ahead, Vincenzo.
Why do you look at me when you say that? I just want to say, you know, tonight's kind of a bittersweet night for many of us, those of us who've been on the council for a little bit. We're saying congratulations to some new colleagues, and well done to the three of you. We're welcoming back a councilmember as well. But we know how difficult it is to run a campaign and to be a public servant, and you all three ran a very, very good campaign, so congratulations to you all, welcome to the city council. I think you'll find this body, you know, one that's hardworking with a lot of challenges, but I think there's a lot of opportunities, and we look forward to your service here, and we thank you for, number one, just wanting to serve the residents of Santa Ana. But we also say farewell to three colleagues of ours that have done some, you know, amazing work. And I think, you know, to keep it really brief, I think what matters here is we could talk about a lot of the achievements that have been made in the past, you know, 10 years that I've served on this council. But I think more than anything, relationships were established here. And I think if I can, you know, compel you to think about anything, is that we're gonna disagree up here on different issues, whether it's a policy decision, whether it's, you know, a role that we're gonna be playing. But we have to see that we're all doing this in the best interest of the children and families of our city. And it's great to see, you know, I'm so optimistic that we're finally seeing sons and daughters of Santa Ana now serving. And we have that experience, we have a special relationship and bond to the city, because we've seen it, you know, do well, and we've seen it, you know, decay in some other places, but we've seen that there's a lot of opportunities that we can make a difference in. So I'm very optimistic about where we're gonna be. I want to thank, you know, our staff for everything that they've done to make sure that we've all comported ourselves professionally, respectfully. And look, we have a lot to look forward to, and, you know, I think that, you know, the city is bright, and it's, you know, it's full of robust talent. I think we've got a lot of new executive directors that have joined us recently, and every time I look at them, they're younger than we are. So when you look at pictures of ourselves 10 years ago, when some of us, you know, took the dice, and I guess in the mayor's case, maybe 20 or 30 years ago. But we're all a little grayer, we're all a little thinner up on top, and maybe heavier other places, but more than anything, we do this because we love the city. And I think that's something that we always have to remind ourselves, that our staff, the city family, those of us who are up here, do this for one reason, because we want to leave this city in a better place than what we found. So I think the three councilmembers that left can certainly say that. I've served with them, it's been my honor to serve with them, and I can call them friends. We saw our children grow up, we've seen each other, you know, through moments where they've lost parents, where we've lost siblings, and those relationships and those moments bond each other. So I hope that we'll create those same bonds with one another as we serve, because we will have some tough moments. But in the end, when we disagree, as long as we disagree civilly and respectfully, I think we'll be able to work well together. So I'm very, very optimistic. So thank you all for your service, and congratulations.
Thank you. I now want to call upon Councilmember Roman Reyna, please.
You know, sometimes I'm lost for words. It's been an amazing journey, both good and bad, and that's just the process of life and the process of growing. You know, they asked me why I wanted to run again, why I wanted to come back, and it truly is as simple as this. I care. I care about my community. I love my city. I was grateful for people that reached out to me when I was growing up and they moved me in a different direction. I've been able to give that gift to other people in our community and watch them flourish. And all I want to do is be able to assist and to help. I'm grateful for my mom and my dad, Tomas Raher Reyna and Helen Reyna, who gave me a foundation to build upon, one that's of character, one of strength, one of perseverance. It's not about me, it's about our community and how we move forward collectively. You can tell I'm passionate about my community because of where I sit and where I come from. I look forward to working with our colleagues as we move forward. And congratulate Councilman Penalosa coming on in. You know, we have some good four years coming on with us, with some great work, as well as Councilwoman Cecilia Iglesias. And you got a lot to carry, in the sense that you're the only woman on the board. And so I'm sure you're gonna represent well, and so I look forward to working with you as well. Campaign is one thing, but governing is a difference. And at the end of the day, we're trying to do the best for our community. We're not always gonna agree, but I hope and I believe that the bestment of our community will always be first and foremost. I want to thank you for your time, and to me, time is the most valuable thing that we possess. Because once we spend it, we don't ever, ever, ever get it back. There's a lot of things going on tonight that you didn't have to be here, but you too care about our community. You too intentionally took time out of your day to be here, so that you could see the future of our leadership, that you could see the direction our community is going in. Why? Because it matters to you. And it matters to everybody on this dais. I encourage you guys to get involved, speak up, and let's collectively make Santa Ana the very best it can be. In the words of David Benavides, "Santa Ana's brighter days are ahead of us." Thank you so very much.
Now, Councilmember David Penalosa.
Trying to figure out where to put my hands wasn't... Just here, right? Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for coming out tonight. I'm looking forward to this. I'm very, very hopeful and optimistic of where we could take this city and collectively move it forward. Mr. Mayor, you know, honored to be here with all of you guys, Councilwoman Cecilia Iglesias, and my new colleague, Councilman Roman Reyna, and Vincenzo Villas, and Sol Orio. Mr. Mayor, I was, you were elected to this dais three years before I was born. And, yeah, and it's great to be here sitting next to you, which I'm excited, you know, and, you know, and I know I'm young, and, but I feel like we, I could represent our city, and, you know, Councilman Tinajero, he mentioned people camping out, parents for their kids, at the Jim Thorpe Elementary. And, you know, my mom camped out at MacArthur Fundamental, you know, for my brothers and I. You know, she was a single mom, raised us, you know, my dad passed away, and I know he's with us in spirit, but gracias mamá por estar aquí conmigo y a mis hermanos. Jimmy and Junior, you know, thank you guys for being here. And if it wasn't for my mom camping out at MacArthur Fundamental, you know, it wouldn't have given me the tools that, you know, it allowed me to be here, or my mom, you know, and my dad, leaving everything they knew behind in Mexico, to come here in the '70s and for a better life for themselves. and for a better life for themselves and give me this opportunity, which I'm very, very grateful for. Gracias, mamá. And again, I'm looking forward. I'm going to need guidance from all of you and our residents of San Ana who came out strong for me. I know 90% of the people in here are friends and family, which is, you know, say hello. So thank you guys so much. Again, I'll keep it short. I'm sure I'll have a lot to say the next four years. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Jose Solorio, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few things. First, to the outgoing, but I think they were in a rush to leave that I think they've left the room. But it's been an honor to serve with, you know, Councilmember Tinajero, Councilmember Martinez, and Councilmember Benavides. Others that said we kind of shared a lot of experiences, you know, with our children at local schools, out in the community, campaigned at one point or another alongside them. So, you know, they'll be missed. You know, moving forward, you know, the campaign's passed and, you know, it's now back to work. And, you know, for me still, public safety is, you know, at the top of my list. You know, we have many vacancies to fill and, you know, we're going to work hard to do that. We've been making a lot of good progress on the gangs front, but we've got to continue. We also had zero vice unit when we started. But Councilmember Villas, now Mayor Pro Tem, and I on the Public Safety Committee said, "Look, we really need a vice committee." And they've been doing a lot of good work on Harbor, fighting the prostitution, good work with narcotics, keeping illegal dispensaries away from our neighborhoods, all good things. But the work continues, you know, also park rangers. We still unfortunately have really one full-time park ranger. And believe me, this week, I already got a few calls about Fisher Park and the need for more. So we'll continue. Homelessness isn't necessarily a public safety issue, but, you know, it's something that there is a PD presence and we've got to keep working on that in a humanitarian way with enforcement as well. We also have a big year coming up. You know, it's 2019. And if you do the math and if you've looked at our seal or at our logo, next year we celebrate as a city 150 years. Yes. So we're going to talk about all the good things, but also about the people's history. Because there are some, you know, points in time that weren't as positive. But we're going to talk about those two in a good and an educational way. But I also believe really the next 150 years are going to be shaped by this council. You know, we have, you know, some outstanding folks up here, some that they're starting day one and they can serve up to 12 years. So this council really is going to set the tone for the next 150 years. You're a part of it by being here today. And it's an honor to continue to serve the people of San Ana. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Villas, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to give thanks to the previous councilmembers who were working here for all of their hard work, their distinguished service. I learned a lot from them and more than anything, I made new friends. Because even though it's a tough job being up here and it's a lot of work, but, you know, we find time because, you know, we're still human. We still can, you know, have a good time and talk and meet each other's family and get along. And, you know, we're all professional. We put things aside. When I first started, it was Councilmember Solorio who held my hand, so to speak, when I started here. I'm always be grateful. Thank you, Jose. Always grateful. And I learned a lot. And now I'm serving in this position. All I would like to say is that I will do my best and give my word. I always say my word is good. I'm human. I will definitely try. Because we, you know, we're all, you know, we all make mistakes. And it is a lot of work. And sometimes it gets tough up here. Some really, really tough decisions to make. But everything is always in the best interest of the city. My question is, is it good for the city? That's what I always ask myself when I have to make these decisions. I want to thank my colleagues for the vote of confidence. And I thank you again and it's an honor to serve with you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Now, Councilmember Cecilia Iglesias, please.
Wow, I don't know what to say. It's a blessing to be here and it's... I'm humbled by all the support that I received. Going into the election was very, very tough. You would have asked me back then, "Do you think you're going to win?" Would have said no. But you know what? I have strong faith that God has us in a place for a purpose. And I am very confident that the reason I'm here is to ensure that we move this city forward in a positive direction. And it's been through the support of many of you guys in this room. Definitely with, you know, I couldn't do it without the support of my sister and my mom. They've always been there for me. So thank you. And everyone else that has been there for me from the beginning, I've been serving this city since 2012, was elected to the school board. And I've met a lot of great individuals that care about the city. And I know that together we can do a lot of good things for the city. And I've always believed is communication is the way for us to get things done. So my commitment to you is that I'm always going to have an open-door policy. Know that with me, it's like, what you see is what you get. Is I'm very transparent. And that's what I want for this council, transparency and accountability. And I know that we are going to... Together, we're going to make that happen. And my biggest support and I know is from various individuals here. I want to thank Bob Loewen for being here. You've always been there for me, Bob. Supervisor Doe, thank you for being here tonight. It's such an honor to have you swearing in to this office. And I know we're going to be working together more than before. So I'm looking forward to that collaboration. And everyone else here with the Neighborhood Association, all of the leaders, I know that you guys have the best interests at heart for the city. And I'm willing to join you in that endeavor. And I also want to thank, and I know they're very quiet back there, Moises and Raoul. Thank you. You guys are my Charlie's Angels. Thank you. You guys helped me through this. Since I met you guys in 2012, you guys have believed in me. So thank you very much. And definitely, I want to thank Angie. Angie Conno. You have been an inspiration and know that you have my support. And I know that we're going to be doing great things for the city. And everyone else that I'm not able to name, but you guys know who you are. And I just want to thank you again for your vote of confidence. I want to thank the voters of this city for believing in me, knowing that I have the best interests at heart for the community. And I don't know if this would be a great time, a good time to ask, but one thing that I would like to bring for a discussion, I don't know if that's something that I could do right now?
Maybe it's today's best just to keep it to the swearing in, but we'll be meeting in a few days. You can bring it up then.
Anyway. Yeah, so I would like for all of us to just remember that the motto of this great nation is "In God We Trust." And I know one day we're going to have this here at this council chambers. So thank you very much for your vote of confidence. Gracias a toda la comunidad. Gracias por su apoyo. Y estoy aquí para servirles. Que Dios los bendiga. Cardasio.
Now it is my privilege to make a brief comments and then we're going to go to Bowers. Any of you that want to go, it's right down the street and we're going to celebrate there. Let me just say that I think